Committee of the whole of the village, Portonville Board and the Town of Hartonia Board. Just so you know, we have two members because of work will either be late or not show up for this. We will go with the potential dissolution of the Joint Fire District. And we've received a letter from the Town of Hartonia to do an appraisal on the equipment. You want to comment on that more, Bob?
Our Board believes that we should at least explore the possibility of leaving the Joint Fire Department. And we, as a Board, we think the fire department puts a burden on our residents that we have a hard time keeping up with. We also feel that it might be better if we were charged a yearly fee for the fire department versus having two boards over on the commission. So that's what we're here to explore. We want what you guys think and we want to listen to what your opinions are and we'll voice ours also.
Is there a problem? I know we have some problems with them. I was wondering if there was something you would also...
Well, our concern is that we don't have a lot of growth. And so as the fire department budget increases, it puts a heavier burden on the 290 residents that we have for us to raise taxes, you know, as well as I do, that we're restricted by the state what we can raise. And we've noticed over the last few years that that does not cover anything that we want to do other than support the fire department. And we've come to the conclusion that at least we'd like an appraisal done, you know, mutually agreed upon appraisal, and look at that and make some kind of decision from our end whether we want to continue the agreement.
Do you have any, do you have anything we want to add on our side?
Well, Bob and I have talked about this some because, that Bob, because this Bob approached me a while ago about this, but we had to kind of wait until it came to the Board. But the concerns on it as far as, you know, some procedure later, let's say, if we were to do this, is that if there was the requirement of the village to buy out the property and the equipment and so forth, that I don't know if we have the debt capacity for it. We haven't looked into that. But I do know that no matter what, regardless of the debt capacity, it would be above our debt policy. So we would need to go and change that policy if we were to do this.
I guess that would be our biggest concern for doing this at this time.
So I, just my personal opinion, I guess you could say, is that I would want to, I would ask the question, what would we need to do to make it work? I mean, that's what it boils down to, I guess.
Well, we're not really interested in not having fire service delivered to us.
Right.
We're only concerned about the continual costs that comes to us through the fire department. So, you know, we're looking at, well, let's see, we're approaching $100,000 a year for fire service support, okay? Our budget is 286. So it can, we feel from our standpoint, it would be cheaper for us to just opt out and recharge a yearly fee that we would understand and know. And I guess we would like to take the staff to have it at least appraised so that then we can look at that and, you know, make another decision about it. We're willing to, you know, don't pay for the appraisal and use somebody that we mutually agree upon at least to get some idea about what that would be and what the cost would be to the village. We understand the village's problems with your debt limit and, you know, just we're willing to look at that.
And also just for reference and so forth is that the agreement is until the end of 2019. However, if both parties agree, it can be dissolved prior to that. But this Bob and I were talking today is that, I mean, one of the fortunate part of this is technically the Town of Hartonia could have came to us in June of 2018 and said, "We're not renewing," and we had to scramble and figure out what to do within six months. So we do have the ability to basically say, "No, not until the agreement is done," but work out what needs to be done between now and the end of 2019 so that we are prepared for it. So that's where it stands as far as the agreement.
I guess I can see your point too, Bob. I guess we're paying more for the service than what number of people we've got.
Yeah, it, you know, it's just something that we want to at least look at.
And I know I've had one question the other night at the National Light Notice, how do we staff it? If it becomes just a village, is it only village residents that can be on there and Hartonia people stay on? That's another thing we'll have to look at.
Yeah, we're perfectly comparable with the village running the fire department without our input, you know, we'd be more interested.
Well, I'm talking about the fire department themselves.
Oh, well, I don't know.
If it would have to be, you know, okay, those that are from the Town of Hartonia that are presently on the fire department, would they have to...
Leave?
And it'd be only village running it? That's something else we'll have to look at.
I think that'd be a decision, if we got that far, that the village police and fire commission would have to...
Well, I said, that's another thing we'd have to look at to see if those that are presently town residents could stay on or we'd have to get, sorry.
And our police commission, if this were, this is all hypothetical, just, you know, if this were to occur, then our police commission would regain an F and be a police and fire commission. We would need to do that also if it were to become solely under the auspices of the village.
I think you have a couple of members that are on the fire commission now, so they've been there a long time.
I guess my initial thought is I was hoping that this meeting would be, what can we do to make it work before we go down the avenue of an appraisal? And I, I mean, stop me if I'm going over, but I guess I was wondering if there's any further discussion we can have prior to going, so that maybe sit down with the district, fire district?
Let me ask, let me ask a question that was raised to me. When you guys, when the village does the TIFs, is that included as part of the percentages that we are charged or is that taken out before we are, before we are charged? In other words, is that...
Oh, the way the amount is based on the levy or the assessment?
It's based on the total equalized value as reported by the state of Wisconsin.
So that's village-wide, correct?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Is that including the TIFs, the districts?
I would, I would think so.
Yes, I would think so too. If it's the total equalized value, I didn't, I didn't...
I don't believe that they report, they report the equalized values of the TIFs, but they have another report that does this so that you can subtract it from the total equalized value of the village. But the equalized value for the village is the entire village itself.
I'd have to look at the worksheet, the spreadsheet for it on when it was figured out in the past to say for sure, but that was what I, my knee-jerk reaction is, yes, it's village-wide, but I'd have to, we'd have to look at that first.
That was just a question. I don't, I didn't know the answer to that.
Have you looked at what other towns are, you know, of your size are paying?
No, we haven't did any of that, you know.
It just seems to me, Bob, that, I mean, we can set up as a contract, but at this point, I would think that the contract price would be what you're paying now. The village has to go through the same budgetary process. It's, I mean, how else would we do it other than equalized value? That's the typical, the typical deciding factor in fire situations rather than population. But that's just my two cents.
Well, we've had some other questions too, and I don't know if you guys can answer because we certainly don't know the answer, but what happens when you make, you make a call on a county road or a state road and we send out our fire department to, because it's the closest or whatever, does it cover that? Are we reimbursed by the state or...
On the traffic.
Yeah, on a call.
I don't think we're doing any reimbursement, no.
That's something that we had talked about, not so much reimbursement by another agency, but we had talked about doing billing to bill non-residents or, you know, different portions of it. I hadn't, that's what I was going to do for 2017 budget, but frankly, I didn't pursue that further because of when you had come to me a while ago about this.
My recollection is we've looked at it in the past and the administration was a concern. I think we were, did we have an ordinance for a while? They had like $500? No, they only looked at that. It was like $500 on, say, a traffic fire. And you try to get that from the auto insurance companies. But, you know, I just told that by the time you go through all that and, you know, your likelihood of collection, that that's, and I don't know, how many, how many traffic fires do we have, Dave?
Is it a little bit of that number?
Of course, and it's not a large number, is it?
Yeah, I don't know. We get called out now every time there's a car to dish for...
I do.
Seeing safety and stuff. A lot of them.
Yeah. We can put right now, we don't.
Yeah. We did it one time because I know I had an accident here in town many years ago and I got charged $100 at that time for the fire department to be there.
Yeah, usually they're charged and the guys that collected had a very hard time getting it.
Well, and actually where I used to live, when I inadvertently lit my backyard on fire and they came out, it was just automatically assessed my tax bill. So that's how they collected it in the village I lived in. But it's, I mean, that's something that I had started exploring because we talked about it last year and I know a lot of communities are going that way because levy limits and the situation that we're all in.
I don't know how that goes over. For example, it's required at somebody's home, you know, in reality, they're paying for fire department anyway.
True, but it's, I guess I see it kind of like insurance is you end up paying more when you use it. It's a, well, I didn't have any issue with paying the six, mine was $680 I had to pay, but I, I don't know.
I think that's something that...
That's the biggest problem we have when we charge, your elderly residents, who they're getting charged, they won't call. To see a detector go off, they call me. Or they won't call the one because they're going to be charged. And that was a problem we were having.
And I think you'd have that problem again.
Well, that's something that I guess if that's something that we want to explore further to reduce costs, you know, I know that there's a lot of places that don't charge for like CO2, you know, carbon dioxide detectors or certain things that they just simply don't charge for, but anyway.
I guess that's something we're going to look at, your issues, cost there, because I know where I am, it's going to be cost also.
Yeah, well, you're, you're a larger municipality than what we are, so...
Yeah, that's, that's true.
I wouldn't think in, you know, in the long run that, you know, whatever the charge is going to be to us would have to reflect, you know, what the budget's going to be.
I was just wondering, now, the part that's, looks like it's attached to New London, do you pay New London for covering that area or is that...
No, we only, we only do here.
What are you guys thinking, well, splitting it up between the one and the other?
We haven't even addressed that at all. We're just here to tell you that we're satisfied with the fire department and the coverage they give us. We just do not want to be part of the governing board anymore. We just want to be charged, you know, a yearly fee and pay it and be done with it.
Yeah, because all the trucks will have to get relettered and gear will have to get relettered and squirt the fee there.
Another thing, when you do the assessment, the value of it, how does that work? There's certain piece of equipment on there, big piece of equipment that we paid for, the fireman himself. How does that work? Our fundraising is, you know, it's tax dollars. It wasn't taxpayer money.
Yeah, I mean, I think ownership's with the municipalities, even though the funds are, you know, you're allowed to have your own funds, you have your fundraisers and you know, you're allowed to spend those funds as you see fit. But I don't know that the equipment is owned by the fire department as a separate entity. Anything that's there is, at this point, is owned by the Joint Fire District.
Yeah, I see it as no different than like, say, Friends of the Library. They do fundraisers to buy books for the library, but the books belong to the library, not the Friends of the Library.
Okay, but I mean, as a resident of Portland, I went out and worked my butt off for this fine, put a lot of time and effort into working for it, and then they're going to assess and we're going to pay some, I'm going to have to pay for it. Something already bought. I think we just set it out.
I don't know, how do you mean you're going to have to...
If there's a reason value of the fire department up in these, but all we have to pay.
The village, we're talking, I mean, it's the village that has to pay for it. If we end up paying up...
I'm a village resident.
Oh, right, yes.
I'm paying for something I already worked for and bought.
Take them out of our taxpayers' pocket and came out of what we raised.
Again, I mean, I get back to the, it varies so much to the exact same scenario as the Friends of the Library.
Free book sale that, you know, and then we donated the funds back to the library.
But if it was liquidated, it would be village.
Like I take my, my monthly amount that I get as a board member and half of that, I buy supplies for the library to alleviate some of the budget costs with the library. So I take half of what I make and give it right back. So that would be hard too to watch that, get divided out and pay for that a second time, but...
It's actually part of the fire department, it's going to be part of the assessment because it's owned by the joint communities, it's, yeah, not necessarily owned by the fire, firemen themselves. I mean, it's owned, we are the governing body, you know, the ones of us sitting here. So the Town of Hartonia and the Village of Hartonia will be the actual owners of that property. So it would be assessed, yes.
Is there a current inventory of what, what's there now? I mean, or just starting from scratch? For like an inventory of equipment and, I mean, do you, do you do any depreciation or anything of that? Or do, I mean, I don't think, no depreciation? No, according to the auditors, they don't do any depreciation.
Okay. Well, I guess my kind of question is, I, you know, when Bob, when you first talked to me, I guess I thought that this was a possibility. I guess before we put the train down, really down, part of the, part of down the track, I mean, to me, this kind of looks like a divorce, is, you know, can we go to counseling before we start doing the appraisal? Or are we past that?
Well, I'd like to tell you one way or another, Diane, but I would, we would like to just go a few more steps and see what it's going to be. But I think we're probably going down a road that could mean that we are going to ask to the village to take over the fire department. Now, it's not written in stone. It depends on a lot of things. I mean, you know as well as I do that being in the country, our fire bills are a lot higher through the insurance companies because of where we're located and how long it takes a fire truck to get there. So you, you know, you take into those considerations once we talk to the lawyers about, and the insurance companies about what that means if we're no longer part of the Portonville, Hartonia Fire Department. So, you know, we have, we have questions that need to be answered, but we would still like to go to an appraisal. I don't have, you know, I'm not saying it's got to be done tomorrow or the next day, but I think we need to go to that next step, at least have the equipment and building appraised so that we can at least look at what that is going to be involved in and what's going to be involved in for you.
Well, I, maybe I need help with the legalities, but is these two boards deciding this big decision or is this potential referendum that could be done? No?
I'll be the board.
Okay.
We agree. The two municipalities created the Joint Fire District.
Okay.
And we have an agreement, so...
Okay.
No, it would not be a referendum. Yeah, I would expect, this is real ballpark, but that's going to run to some thousands for both real estate and all the equipment.
You mean for the appraisal to be done, you're talking about?
Yeah, right. And I don't know, you know, real estate's a little easier, but, you know, the equipment's another thing. And Larson and Winchester, or excuse me, Clayton Winchester did this very thing a year ago. I'm not sure who they had. They had multiple appraisals. They weren't on the same page and so, you know, each municipality did their own. But we can check to see who would do those type of things. It's just another, but it is, it's not an insignificant expense.
Yeah, we understand that, yeah.
I would assume that we would split the cost of the appraisal similar to how we split the cost of the fire district by, along the same percentage assess of the...
That'd be only by agreement. I mean, the agreement we have is to share the normal expenses. This would be like you say, a divorce, I think, you know, that's subject to separate rules.
And, you know, we're the one that are asking for the appraisal, you know, so we don't really have a problem, you know, splitting it or, you know, whatever. But we'd like to use just one, you know?
Yeah, so there's something to be said for that, so I guess.
Yeah, what do you guys have? We can agree on one person to do it.
Yeah.
Or one company, whatever.
Well, I think, well, I mean, having been through a similar situation with a divorce is, I think what sometimes happens is that an appraisal comes in and one side or the other, you know, thinks that it's low or high or whatever is to their benefit kind of thing and then, you know, gets somebody else that they think might bring it in higher or lower to their benefit.
Well, I think if we, I think if it comes to that point, whichever municipality says they pay for the whole thing.
If there's going to be any challenge.
So can we legally deny them to split from us?
Well, you have an agreement that goes through 2018.
And it doesn't get automatically...
Either party can say, or they can, right, they can opt out.
So they could say, then we're done come 2018.
Not any action that automatically renews, but if they...
Well, like Diane says, I'm glad we're talking about this now because this is a long, arduous process. There's so many issues that have to be addressed, obviously.
And along those lines too, and Bob and I were talking today, that even if everything started going right now and everything happened quite easily, let's say, you know, we're talking that earliest, the soonest we could get this completed would be like the end of 2018. And I think that was being very optimistic on timeframe. So for purposes of budget, since we're all in that process right now, the 2018 budget is status quo. We stay as we are with the district as it is because there's no way this will happen in, you know, for the 2018, for 2018.
Diane, tell you a question. Yeah, I mean, if one of the two parties wants out, subject to the terms of the contract, it was voluntary act on part of the municipalities to cooperate and so, you know, if they don't want to do that anymore, ultimately, you can't stop them.
How do your residents feel about this?
We haven't, we haven't per se addressed the residents' problem. We're here to address what the procedure's going to be and what, what advantages it has to, it may not have any advantages to us and we may come back after we get all done and say, "We don't think we're going to leave," you know? But it's been raised and so as the chairman of the town, it's my job to find out. So that's what we're doing here.
Was there something that came up that, that it happened? I mean, all of a sudden, during all these years?
Uh, no, no, not that I'm, we're not dissatisfied with the fire department or anything like that, so...
One of the guys at the board meeting said that you brought up the fact that we were talking about buying another truck.
He explained to me you weren't.
Yeah, but you said that I told you that. At the meeting yourself?
No, I presented to our annual meeting that we were looking down the line to have to purchase another fire truck. And I don't know what individual was that was there, but he was from the fire department. He says, "No, I think we're going to refirmish it."
Yeah, we don't have, I had to talk to him on that.
Yeah, well, but, you know, it's in the record, that's what he said, so. And I didn't challenge him on it because, you know, I assumed he knew more about it than I did, so. But we did bring it up at our board meeting, you know, our annual meeting, about the costs of the fire department compared to our overall budget. And of course, when we're restrictive on much money we can raise, it becomes a foul.
So are we having any more comments or questions from either board or Bob or Diane?
I guess what I'm kind of taking away from this is that we start exploring, you know, Bob, the, who, who does appraisals and then we'll bring it back to the board and to the town board. I guess that's what I see as the next, our marching orders.
Good, yeah, that would be what I'd see.
I know the, oh, I know a fire individual that's in the Green Bay area that knows the answers to all those questions and kind of does that statewide, so you can directly...
So we'll get something together and discuss it with you and if we can agree on somebody to do the appraisal.
Well, I think, you know, I'm sure the village has more experience in this than what our board has, so finding an appraiser, so, I mean, and I trust the board to come up with somebody that's going to be fair, you know, and give us, you know, if we find it objectable, we'll just have to go out and have our own appraisal done, that's all.
Well, we'll, we'll need to notify you, I'll be in touch about it, obviously the cost of it too.
Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
And when you talk to them, you'll ask them about a couple of different appraisers?
I'm going to get a list if I can, so that you have options, who he would, he knows that does them in this area. I'll find out too what Clayton and Winchester used. Presumably, you know, one of the persons on that list, but we'll see.
Guess if we don't have anything else.
Does anyone, do you want to comment on anything, Nancy?
Well, the only thing is, you know, we've had pretty restricted ordinances out there since 1978 and they come up with three acre lots, you know, and if it's farmland, you got to have 40 acres to build a house on. Well, that was fine 30 years ago, but now we still got our 1,100 people and, you know, how much the cost of things have gone up in the last 30 years. And we've got no more tax base to pay for it. That's the problem, like other townships like in Dale that look all around us, they're just building houses all over. And we're like if we build one house a year out by us. And I said years ago, well, someday that's going to catch up with the town of Portonia. And today's the day. We took our $100,000 road budget for two years in a row to pay for the fire truck. And half the roads are shot like everybody else's, you know. And we just can't keep dumping money, you know, you can't raise the mill rate 3% a year. That's $3,500 for the town of Portonia. So, you know, and our clerk looked at it and she said, you know, we just got to do something about it or try to anyway, you know. Because, you know, it's just, it'd be different if we had 3, 4,000 people out there or five like other townships, but we don't. And there's nobody going to move out there because there's no, there's nothing for sale. So that's the problem we got, one problem. For Portonia, I mean, you're starting a big subdivision out there, there's going to be 600 people out there, you know. We're probably, and we ain't going to have anybody in our township, so the percentage will probably be 80/20 in six, eight years. So, you know, you're going to be pretty paid for all of it probably in six, eight years anyway, fire department.
Do you know what the population of your...
1,100.
Sounds like you need to change your zoning.
We just thought we'd evaluate. We sent out, we sent out a survey years ago, asked them if they wanted to change ordinance to less than three acres, the whole way, leave it the exact way it is. But people out there like it, you know, I mean, that's how it is, they don't want nobody else there, you know, so...
But when you have a situation at your home where they're on relax, and then you want the best equipment out there to help them? How does that work?
Well, they don't want to pay high taxes either, but when I'm standing there looking at a house, a four-story brick house, and they're telling me they're paying too much for taxes, you know, I tell them, hey, move in the village. They don't like the taxes in Portonia, you know, they're the cheapest they're out. So that's, that's just the way they always tell you, you know. They're always going to complain about the road, taxes and everything, you know.
But that's everywhere.
That's everywhere.
There's no such thing as a happy taxpayer?
No, no, you know, that's all.
Do you want to go up and say something?
I apologize for coming late. I was just, just a synopsis, this is a, this is, basically this is a financial issue that is coming down to the U.S. case. It's, it's nothing that can be fixed other than...
No, it's just a financial issue, we just, you know, we got to look into it, see how we can relieve it.
And because your municipality does bump up against like Dale and New London, would you be contracting solely with the village department?
We don't know yet.
You know what I mean, like this zone is Dale, this zone is New London, this zone is...
We haven't explored that at all.
We haven't explored that yet, but I know New London, you know, years ago, they wanted to take that, that whole works over all the way to the town hall. You know, when we tried to, you know, we tried to sign an agreement with them, you know, where we had mutual aid if we needed it, you know. They had it in the wording that they were going to come all the way, they do all the fire protection in the town hall. I had to take it back to them and say, no, we don't want fire protection to the town hall. We just want a mutual aid agreement. If you got to, you know, come in for a firefight or something, you know. Finally got that straightened out, so. We haven't talked to Dale or New London or nobody. This is the first time we've talked to anybody. I mean, we don't want to, you know, go behind the bat or anything like that or something like that.
Just trying to figure out financial, if it's a contracted year, every year money's coming in to help pay for, you know, is it, are we looking at like this amount or are we looking at a third of that? You know, that's why I asked, just trying to think of the long term.
Like Dana said, six years from now, that difference is going to be...
Probably it's 42 now, we will, 42, we will pay what, 58 or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now, you know, the development goes out there and stuff, you know, it could be, you know, if there's 600 people out there, it could be 80/20 or something, you know, so...
That difference could change, probably someone...
Yeah.
Question, if we're, as a village resident, I pay taxes like everybody else and I will only drive our fire department, any cheaper route, to be honest with you, we can't. We're very frugal. We raise a lot of money ourselves. But if we did need to cover any of Portonia, we reserve equipment that we use out there. Do we need the equipment we have right now if we don't need to go out there and protect them?
No, that's part of the process, so. And if it goes through, either one side buys out the other or, and/or some of the equipment gets sold. So it is very much like a divorce, you're just going to do what you need to do so that when you do the paperwork and you put numbers or values on items that, you know, assign the debt that it comes out to those appropriate numbers, you know, which is going to be the equalized value of both communities, that's our agreement right now.
Well, do you remember when Greenville was in Hortonville and Ellington was in Hortonville?
Yeah.
When they left, I think they took a fire truck with them. You know, because they were starting their own fire department.
Yeah.
Ellington and Greenville.
Yeah, so it can go, so it can go either way.
It can go either way.
If, right, if you, at that point, you say we got way too much equipment, well then, right, we're going to sell it or they're going to...
Well, I mean, if, we're going to cover a fraction of them?
Oh, that's not decided yet.
I, I, I don't know, I don't know if we're going to talk because people from our fire department are just saying... It was going on quite a while ago, so it's not a secret. There's going to talk because people from our fire department support us and ask us questions, we don't cook.
Oh, that, yeah.
Right.
If it's like that, we couldn't give it now either.
So also we...
In the very, very preliminary stages, so we, those are, you know, we can't answer those questions at this time. That's something that's further down the line, you know, if they decide to stay with us, you know, keep the Hortonville-Portonia fire district, well, then, if they opt out, well, then it depends on what they do for coverage. If they say Hortonville covers the whole thing, well, then, then we have to look at it that. But if they divide it up or go with one of the others, we have to look at it at that time. Something we can't answer at this point. That would be a future answer. But yeah, I think we should get the appraisals going or...
The appraisal does what, if the appraisal tells us the value of...
The value of all the, of all the assets that are jointly owned. And then if they were to dissolve, then that would be, the village would need to basically pay out or sell, you know, their share of the assets.
To them, okay. That's probably not a good thing.
That's why we're calling it a divorce. And I think, you know, the kids don't want a mom and daddy get divorced and don't want to choose a parent.
The structure of the agreement, I know that we're probably way ahead of ourselves, but the structure of the agreement is, there's, as I was reading, there's a six-month, they're getting a six-month notice to the current agreement, when does the current agreement end, do we know?
19, that's 18.
I apologize, I'm sure this was already covered before I was up here, I apologize for that. Okay, so we've got like two years to...
At the end of 2019.
It can mutually end prior if it's mutual or by then, we were saying before that, Bob and I were talking about this earlier and that, you know, if we move this right along, you know, at a minimum, it would be the end of 2018, but likely longer. So for the purposes of budget, the 2018 budget is as it is now, there's no change.
So the appraisal will take, once we get somebody in line now, the appraisal takes what, seven months?
No, it's five years, I mean, probably a month, I mean, turn around.
I guess in 18, once we...
I thought it was in the second...
Say in the 18?
We're going to have to throw that...
It was renewed in 2018.
And jointly, I mean, they're going to have to throw it on there.
Well, it's going to be a budget thing, is it January? Not in the budget, so yes, it's going to have to come through.
First of January to the end of December.
Both words to approve.
So it'll be five years.
So we're looking at, it'll just be a couple of months at least before we can even...
December of...
Of 2019. I mean, if everything did move forward on it, if it happened earlier, then, you know, and it was mutually agreed upon, then it's good, it's just that, you know, if you want to get out before that and we're not ready, we can say no.
And that's one of the reasons we're here.
Right, we appreciate the advice.
Yes, we do appreciate giving us notice.
And again, we're not saying we are, we're just wanting to do some preliminaries and talk about it.
What's sad is what really drives this is the transportation situation and the roads. Every town's in the same boat. You can only afford to do a half mile of road a year, a mile is almost too much for most towns.
About three miles, we got a bid for three miles, that was a year and a half ago, $450,000. Just to grain it off, touch up the shoulders, add a little gravel and reblack top three inches.
Absolutely.
It's not going to get cheaper?
Yeah, it's not getting any cheaper and we're not getting any more money in. Like I say, our mill rate's $3,500 a year if you raise it every year. That's all we can get, so. Just, the money ain't there, that's, that's the bottom line, because the money's not there, you know, so...
And that part we understand.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure we're all in the same fault.
Yes.
But we represent our hand and you have to represent yours, that's brilliant.
Ironically, they were probably put together as a joint fire district to save money, you know, years ago. Which is sad, that it comes down to money, you know.
Okay, if anybody else has anything else move forward, if not, we can adjourn this meeting and we'll let you know when we have some appraisers.
Yeah, and we'll probably be a couple more times, you know, we want to keep each other pressed on what the thinking is and what the process is going to be.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do you have a second? All the A R C I.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned.